Correspondents. A motion on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. President, I have moved that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Uh, Laura, any questions? And would you like to press again? Close.
We're excited. We're excited about the opportunity of being able to present at the National Model Schools Conference in Orlando, Florida next week. We're gonna give two presentations. We get one Monday at 3:45 next week and follow-up on Tuesday morning at 9:30. The title of our presentation is "Statewide Rigor, Relevance, and Relationships." We are a district at work. And we are, let me get my PowerPoint here back. Group finally shares my PowerPoint here with me. But we're building a model school culture district-wide. The building blocks of a model school district, and you can see them there. You'll see those in a handout that will be available to all of the people that will be viewing this. And I will give a little background on Garden City. You know, Garden City, Kansas, is located about 400 miles west, southwest of Kansas City, about 200 miles west of Wichita, and about, you know, probably about 350 to 375 miles east, southeast of Denver. But we are in the center of the country. Here's what we look like. We're the ninth-largest school district in the state. We have approximately 7,725 students, and we have 18 attendance areas or centers. We have an early childhood center. We have 11 elementary schools, two intermediate centers, two middle schools, one alternate school, and we feed into one large high school that's about the fourth-largest high school in the state. We were blessed here a few years ago to pass a $97.5 million bond where we were able to build a brand-new high school built around smaller learning communities. And we were also able to build an early childhood center that holds all of our students district-wide. In addition, we are the second-largest school in the state geographically. We cover over 900 and some square miles. We have students that, not very many of them, but we have a few students that ride over 40 miles on a bus one way. Here's what we look like. As far as our student body, we are about 78 percent minority. Our largest minority group is Hispanic. We're about 72 percent Hispanic. Forty-seven percent of the student body are English-language learners or second-language learners. Seventy-two percent of our student body are on free or reduced lunch. Maybe the best breakfast or the best lunch that our students get come from school. If you walk the halls of Garden City Public Schools, you'll hear as many as 26 different languages spoken. Garden City is an agribusiness economy. Tyson has one of their largest plants there in our community. At any given time, you will find as many as a million head of cattle around Garden City. In addition to the meat processing industry, of which about a third of our students' parents work at Tyson, we also have very large farms, as well as several large dairy farms as well. But it is an agribusiness economy. Here's our vision for the district. We have model schools. But our goal is to be a model district. We want all of our, all 18 of our attendance centers to be model schools. And that's what we're working toward. And even though we are a highly diverse population of students, we make no excuses. We expect our students to learn at a high level. Here's some things, anytime I go into a workshop, I wanna get some takeaways to go back to my district. And some of the takeaways you may get here is affirmation. In other words, "Golly, we're doing that." Or, "Wow, that's different than what we do. Maybe we should try that." But change is doable. The board and administrative support is critical to the success of teacher empowerment and systematic change. Our board is supportive of change. Our board is supportive of our teachers and our administrators. As a matter of fact, in relationship to the Common Core, our board presented to the State School Board Association in support of the Common Core, or in Kansas, they're known as the Polygen Career Readiness Standards. Culture is vital to success. And as Bill Daggett says, "Culture does trump strategy." We have a culture of learning. We have a culture to bring about change in Garden City. We're very blessed to have that culture in place. We empower teachers and support them to achieve success. Relationships do matter. Data-driven decision-making and a systematic approach are critical. Students respond to rigor and relevant instruction. Professional development should be centered on effective leadership, continuous job-embedded learning, and professional learning communities. We believe students will learn in a safe environment. We're having them treated with dignity and respect. Every child will learn, achieve at high standards, no excuses.
Learning includes academic and social competencies. Every member of the learning community will continue to grow, learn, and wait for it. All building staff will be responsible for the learning of all students.
Effective change is intentional, coherent, and dynamic.
Families play an important role in the education of children. Effective communication is essential for all stakeholders involved.
All decisions will be data-based. Okay, and the building blocks for the success, culture.
Assessments.
Curriculum.
And instruction.
Professional development.
Good day, everyone. My name is Grant Allen. I'm a special education teacher in Garden City, Kansas. And I'll be talking with you today about culture. Now, a very dear friend of mine, Dr. Alex Coning, would normally be joining me up here today, but he's unable to join us, so he'll be flying solo. But that's okay. So, culture. Culture is extremely important to the model school idea. Everything that we do happens within the context of culture. So it's important that we be purposeful when we look at this piece. Now, after I get done talking to y'all, I want you to be able to answer three questions. What does model school culture look like? How do we achieve model school culture? And what does it look like in practice? Now, a wise man named Bill Daggett once said, "The culture trumps strategy." And that's something that I've heard in my training in college, but it's not until we've gotten to the classroom that you really understand the importance of culture. Culture really drives the success in your classroom. And so, what does a model school culture look like? Well, in Garden City, model school culture is empowering teachers to be successful. Teachers are the ones who are on the front lines. They're the ones that are in the trenches every day in the classrooms. They know what's best for their kids better than anyone else. And so, we've taken the approach of empowering them and giving them the authority, giving them the opportunity to bring about change in our schools. Administrators, they're in a position where they're able to see things more of a macro perspective. So, their job is, in this case, is to guide and to support our teachers as they are working to revolutionize their school districts. In model school cultures, relationships are very important. Everything happens within school culture. Learning also happens in the context of the student-teacher relationship. And model schools understand this, and model school districts devote time and resources in order to build these relationships. Everyone speaks the same language. In Garden City, all teachers are required to learn Swahili, which is a very important language in the, I'm sorry, that was a joke. No, no. What I mean by that is that everyone is on the same page. Everyone understands that when you say words like rigor and relevance or-
Metacognition.
Or metacognition.
Oracy.
Or oracy. When we hear these words, we understand what they mean. We've had conversations about what exactly these words mean to us. And so, when we hear them, we say, "Ah, I know what you're talking about." We're all on the same page. We all speak in the same language. And model school district cultures have high expectations of all stakeholders. Students, teachers, parents, administrators. High expectations across the board, no excuses. And I wanna talk to you next about transformation teams. Transformation teams are going to be the chief vehicle through which your schools will be changing their school culture. These teams are made up of teachers. They're led by teachers with administration support. And these teachers are empowered to make changes in their district. So, in Garden City, we also have transformation teams which look at specific academic skills, things that you can find in any classroom, namely, reading, writing, speaking, listening, and problem-solving. And so, we have transformation teams devoted to developing practices in those areas. We also have transformation teams at a district level and as well as in each individual building level to look at changing and making better school cultures. So, what makes a successful transformation team? That's a very good question. If you direct your attention over to the board here, you can see that transformation teams have to have the authority to make changes. These aren't the teams of, you know, pretty good ideas that if you wanna do these things, "That'd be cool, I mean, you don't have to, but you could." I don't know. They have the power to make the changes, okay? Administrators empower teachers in these teams to say, "Yes, you know what we need better than anyone else. You make the decisions, we'll support you." Successful transformation teams also have a system of norms, which are created by the team and then are honored. These norms have to be, they're in place, so now are things that runs, in order for things to run smoothly. You can get into some pretty heavy topics sometimes, and there might be a little bit of disagreement. It's important to have measures in place so things run smoothly. You also must have a clear and defined purpose. These transformation teams have to know what it is that they are working towards in order to be successful. So, a clear and defined purpose is important. Some guidelines to consider while you're endeavoring to become a model school district. A model school district is built in the mind before it is seen in the practice. Now, you might be saying to yourself, "Self, what does that mean?" Simply, you must believe before you can do. You have to see it in your mind before you become it. You have to be able to say, "Yes, we can totally do this, absolutely. If we work together, if we follow all of our passions together, we can totally do this." You have to be able to believe it first. You have to have that fire before you can go out and actually do it. And once you have that fire, you gotta channel it in the right way. So, you wanna focus on quantifiable, attainable goals, okay? You have to be able to be measured so that way you can monitor your progress as you're working towards your goals. You wanna strike a balance also between tackling big things and small things. So, you don't wanna spend all of your time saying that we're gonna unify grading policies in every single building and every single classroom across the entire district. It's a really big issue. You also don't wanna get too bogged down in the minutia, you know, and say, "Oh, this is a really nice poster, I think it should go on this wall." "Let me go on that wall. What do you think? Let's weigh the pros and cons of which wall this poster should go on." You wanna strike a balance between big things and small things. You also wanna strike a balance between seeking buy-in and making accomplishments. So, seek as much buy-in from as many different people as you can while actually moving forward, actually getting some things done. I mean, this isn't the United States Congress. You gotta actually get something done at the end of the day. So, yes, walk that line, strike the balance. Administrators. Your teachers are very highly qualified, passionate, hard-working people. Put your trust in them. Teachers, your peers are very highly qualified, passionate, hard-working people. Put your trust in them. Trust one another. Work together, and you can move mountains. Dr. Susekowitz talks about the importance of self-monitoring. And we recommend that you leave the monitoring up to your teachers. When you involve administrations, it kinda walks on the line of evaluation. That's not kinda really where we wanna go with that. So, have a culture in your schools where it's okay for teachers to come into each other's classrooms and say, "Hey, you know, I'm working on this one initiative. I don't know if I'm doing it right. Can you come in and just take a look, see if I'm doing it right?" Like that. You wanna develop a method for implementing change systematically, systematically. What we mean is that you want to, your change should be system-wide in a very methodical way. For an example, Dr. Susekowitz recommends that you, when you are attempting to implement some initiative, that you hand out scripted, that you hand out scripts to your different teachers, to your different teams, so that way everyone gets the exact same information, so that way everyone's on the same page. All right, so, talking about the, hm? Okay, my apologies. Okay, it's storytime, boys and girls. Let me tell you about a transformation team that's gone pretty well. It's at the building that I teach at, and we like to call ourselves the Conclave. Okay, now, there's not gonna be any white smoke, and there's no Pope's involved, but I mean, he's invited if he wants to come, if he's in town. But this is inspired from Dr. Susekowitz. She came to Garden City, and my dear friend, Mr. Alex Coning, went and saw her give a speech about model schools. And he was floored. He was like, "Wow, this is awesome. We can totally do this." And so, we brought that back to our school, and he's like, "Hey, boss, this is awesome. We can totally do this." And boss is like, "Go for it." And so, he got, he rounded up a number of teachers, and we got together, and we huddled in a dark room, and we said, "Okay, what do we do?" We didn't know. We had to come up with a goal. So, we asked ourselves, "What do we want to do?" We decided that we were going to be the very best school we could be. And we were gonna do that through building a common language, common practices, and working towards building a model school culture. We meet twice a month, and our meetings are just, you know, epic brainstorming sessions. We have all these different teachers, some different experience levels, and different disciplines, and they just come in, and we just have these awesome conversations, and we throw all our passion into it, and it's super exciting, super empowering to be a part of. It's quite, it's just a fascinating thing. It's very cool. A lot of passion, a lot of good ideas being thrown out there. And so, how do we, how are we successful? Well, we open up the Conclave to everyone. So, the thing with the Pope, and make it serious, if he wants to come, that's fine. We open it up to everyone. Everyone can come. We established and we honored norms. So, we did that one the first day. We said, "These are the rules. We're gonna treat everyone with respect, and we're gonna make sure that we honor these rules." And we've been very much empowered by administration at building and district levels. They've been just great with supporting us, empowering us, saying, "Just go with it. That's a great idea, go for it." Here's some of the things that we have been working on, some things that we've done. We first implemented a homework policy to build the act of homework in our students. We also instituted agenda checks, where students have to come with their agenda every day, and they need to write down important information in that agenda. We have a saying at our school that if it's brown, write it down. And what that means is that anything written down in brown on like a whiteboard, they have to write down in their agenda. We created a series of statements, value statements, that at our school, "We." And these are statements that we want everyone in our school to know. These are things that we believe, and respect, and punctuality, things of that nature. The Conclave took an active role in our sort of district internal conversation about what we want our calendar to look like. We wanted a calendar that would have an increased level of collaboration for teachers. We did some research. We put out a position paper. We lobbied to other teachers in our district. Unfortunately, we didn't get the calendar we wanted, but it was a good experience. It was a good learning experience for us. We're proud of what we did. Next year, next year. We implemented a student recognition program, Student of the Month, to recognize students that are of good behavior. Maybe not necessarily the best academically, but are just, you know, good kids. We wanna recognize that behavior and wanna build those relationships. And speaking of relationships, we started an eighth-grade celebration. We had a student come to Conclave and said, "Hey, you know, we're going to the high school next year. We kinda wanna like a send-off, you know, something kinda cool like that." And we said, "That's a great idea, young child. Let's do that." And so, we met and we planned this eighth-grade celebration. We had it on the last day of school, and it turned out to be pretty successful. We've looked at our grading policy. We haven't shied away from that, but it's definitely a very complex, hey, what are you doing? Very complex. It's a big topic. And one of the things we decided was that we're going to take behavior out of the grade whatsoever, so everything that's in the child's grade is what they know or what they can do. We've been looking at the self-monitoring piece. That's very important. We've been piloting having teachers in the Conclave take Conclave notes and ideas out to different teams in order to gather feedback, bring that feedback back to the Conclave. Sort of a self-correcting loop, if you will, using data to drive our decisions. And what are we doing now? Well, we're still working hard. We're excited to get started again next year. And I think the important thing is that the work is never done. It's never gonna come to a point where we're like, "All right, we did it. We're out of school now. Let's go home." We can always be better than we were the day before. I think that's the important thing, is that the work is never done. And how do we know it's working? Self-monitoring, gathering data, talking to other teachers, talking to administrators, gathering that data, so that we know what we're doing is actually working. And probably the biggest thing is that you can do it. We believe that every single person in this room is capable of taking all this information we present to you today, bringing it back to your schools, and revolutionizing your districts. We believe each one of you can do it. Or, as we say in Garden City, "Si se puede!" A wise man did say once, "The culture trumps strategy." But I'm pretty sure that wise man also said that strategy is also really important. And so, to talk about strategy, we have our good friends Chris and Beth. I'll go with the curriculum instruction.
Thanks, Grant. I'm Christopher Corby. I teach second grade in Garden City.
I'm Beth Ashley. I take math at the high school.
And we're gonna tell you a little bit about the curriculum and instruction in place in Garden City.
What does curriculum instruction look like in Garden City?
The curriculum instruction that's in place at Garden City is something that we have spent a vast amount of time developing. Like Dr. Atha said, with 18 different attendance centers, an early childhood center, 11 elementary schools, two intermediate, two middle schools, all funning into one high school, it is extremely important that our students are learning the same material. Not only do they need to be learning the same material, we need to make sure that what they are learning and how they're being taught is done by using data-driven, research-based information. It's gotta be rigorous and relevant, and it has to align with the Common Core state standards.
When you hear the words "data-driven," what do you think of it?
My initial thought is of a robot with only one objective in mind.
Like those robots, the Daleks, Dr. Who?
Stabinate!
Now, luckily for our students, that couldn't be further from the truth. Being data-driven means that we begin with the end in mind. We think of an outcome, and we work backwards. We set a goal, and then we look at where we are in terms of that goal. I had the pleasure of attending the Model Schools Conference last year. It was a tremendous experience. And after having that experience, the teachers and administrators that attended sat down together, and we came up with a goal. We want to be presenting as a model school district at the Model School Conference within five years. Well, look at us now. We may not be a model school district yet, but we are on our way.
Setting goals definitely applies to curriculum instruction. Take a minute, we're gonna count down 30 seconds, to talk with your shoulder partner about one of the goals that your school district or your building has gone, has worked with this year, and what the first step was that you implemented to reach that goal.
Okay, we decided to start by looking at where our students are in terms of our goal. Then we ask, "Where do we go from here?" I can tell you that it looks different at every single one of the 18 different locations in Garden City, and I guarantee it's gonna look different to every school that's represented in this building. But I can tell you that it's doable. It may be different at each of our schools, but we use the same framework to achieve our goals. And one of the ways we achieve our goals is through the MTSS interventions.
MTSS is Kansas' version of RTI. It stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and it's a system of interventions that are research-based and address individual students' needs.
Now, when we say "research-based," that doesn't mean that we just say, "Hey, I think that kid needs some work on some nonsense word fluency," or-
"I don't think that kid gets multiplying signatures at all."
It means we use data from our assessments. Data, it's important. We look at, then we use research-based programs that we have access to to help address those deficits for those students.
The high school uses an early warning system, which is a system that keeps track of data on all students for attendance, course completion, and GPA. This data is sent to the associate principals in each academy, and those principals look with the counselors in each academy for students who might need additional supports. Those students' names are then sent to the student assistance teams in each academy. The student assistance team is comprised of three staff members who work with the students as well as their parents and their teachers to put together an individual learning plan to help those students meet their individual needs.
And some of these students that are identified might actually be receiving special education services. Speaking of special education, our special education teachers are invaluable to our efforts to help our students' progress. So, thank you, Alan.
That's so nice.
Yeah, you're welcome. The teachers and the paras, the special education teachers and paras, are working classrooms with small groups of students. This time that they're working with them, it helps benefit our students receiving special education services, as well as our English-language learners and our general education students. In Garden City, all means all. Every student counts in Garden City.
Each building has chosen research-based intervention models for their individual students at their schools.
One of the, one of the intervention models is Walk to Interventions. Walk to Interventions is awesome because it doesn't just use, it doesn't, you don't have to buy new things. You don't have to buy new programs. You don't have to hire new teachers. You can use what you've got. You use the programs that you have access to, and you can use your staff members. Teachers, paras, interventionists, and even administrators can be a part of Walk to Interventions. Now, as you all know, because you're here at the Model Schools Conference, a rigorous and relevant instruction is key to student success. Because as Bill Daggett says, "Culture trumps strategy." To us in Garden City, that doesn't just mean the culture of our schools.
That means a culture of high expectations for our students. That means a culture of high expectations for our students as well.
And one of the ways that we set those high expectations for our students is through differentiated core instruction. That means that we teach each of our students at their instructional level. It's not just we throw it at the kids, whichever ones don't get it, they fail. We teach every kid so that they have what they need to succeed. We also work with teams to collaborate to build quantity lessons. We work with, we work cross-curricularly to develop those lessons that are both rigorous and relevant, and they really reach students.
The high school has implemented an academy concept which allows teachers to work cross-curricularly to create projects that are going to interest the students. For example, the Public Service Academy this last year did a mock investigation and court trial of a child abuse case, and the Academy of Health Sciences put together a project called "The World of 100," so that students could get an experience with poverty and starvation and disease. The academies give students a more personalized experience in their career class choices. During their ninth grade year, students spend most of their time in the freshman academy. During that year, they will spend some time exploring career options and choosing the career, the academy that they will choose next year. The Public Service Academy offers courses in business, and law, and education. The Academy of Arts and Communication students get to explore not only careers in visual and performing arts, but is also in journalism and broadcasting. And the Academies of Health Sciences and Trade allow students to explore careers in health sciences, as well as careers in manufacturing and construction.
Now, none of this could be possible without the use of technology. Our students have access to technology everywhere they go. Classrooms have computers, schools have mobile laptop carts, and many of the teachers in the district have began to use iPads to help enhance lesson delivery.
At the high school, two years ago, we implemented a one-to-one iPad initiative. The students, at the beginning of the year, in grades nine through twelve, get to check out an iPad to use the entire year for note-taking, for research, and for creating their own projects. The teachers are working to make the iPads not just a substitution for paper and pencil work, but also to enhance the curriculum of their teaching.
Now, with a show of hands, how many in this room work for a district that's adopted the Common Core? Okay, when you see that term "staff buy-in," what do you see? I really hope it's not this mindless drone again. Staff buy-in, our staff buy-in came from so much work from our students, from our teachers. Each grade level has unpacked standards, and they've looked at what's working, as well as what's not working, and what needs changed.
Our staff buy-in also includes the use of district initiatives which are research-based.
Some of these research-based strategies include close reading, persuasive and expository writing, as well as research skills. But the one that I want to talk to you the most about is our transformation initiative, our district-wide transformation initiative.